Quite allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, discussion and we need approval of the minutes. Everybody has time to read them.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
You got Bill?
Yes.
Joy? Yep.
Yes.
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 Okay, next be discussion and approval of the financial report.
Oh, we get the second meeting. We did a special meeting.
Oh, the spec- oh, yeah. The special one too. Sorry. Yep.
I'll make a motion on that too.
Who's going to second it?
I'll second it.
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
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 Now we'll go to discussion and approval of financial report.
Okay, we'll go through the payment listing first. We spent $35,463.82 this last month for labor and repairs, et cetera. Bank reconciliation is $1,508,661.77.
Is there any discussion on that? If not, why wouldn't he have motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
You second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Rob, start.
So, Bill first.
Uh, Rob.
Rob?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joy? Yep.
Dan? Yes.
Also, as the next note. Angela, we had a public hearing on the 2016 budget, so we presented to Julie tonight or give to her tomorrow or whatever. So, it all looks, I mean, looks good to me. She got it structured well. Looks like it's, everything's balanced out well. I think we're in good shape there. So, we have a motion to approve that budget so we can present it to Julie, then we get that thing here for this 2016.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Bill?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yep.
Scott?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a special guest here tonight. Julie Atkins, our Senate County Auditor. Julie?
Hi. Well, thank you for letting me get on the agenda. As you know, last year was an interesting year with the two school districts combined with the transfer of Bethville into Oakport. And at the same time, I think it was in November of 2013, the Park and Recreation levy was passed by the voters. I believe it was a half mill replacement at that time. So, that levy will continue through the life of the levy. What that means is next tax year, when you get your tax, well, which was 15 payable 16, when you get your tax bill, that's when the two school districts will be coming together. It did not occur in your current tax bill. It was a timing issue with what they had filed with our office and when the transferring of the district occurred. So, in verifying and working through all of that, a question was raised, well, they just passed their levy, that "they" being the Village Park Levy for 2014 to be the first year collection. For the Department of Taxation, that levy will continue for its life. So, that means 14, 15, 16, 17, it was a four-year levy, I believe, will continue to use the tax base of the former Bethville School. And I'm sure you're all aware that you have a, I believe, a half mill levy that is expiring after this collection year. So, we just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that and, you know, what your options are with that. Of course, your legal counsel can advise you on that. But from what I understand is you would need to find a new entity if you wanted to use a broader tax base than the Village. And that would be looking at the valuations. So, I just wanted to bring that formally to counsel's attention so that if there's anything you need from me, I can certainly help gather, provide information.
How much money is it going to bring in these next four years, each year?
Didn't you say around $9,000?
Yeah, that's actual receipts from taxpayers. But that, you still get some homestead monies back from it. So, it might be more like 9,400, 9,500 on the average. So, that levy will still run its course.
Is that $90,000 a half or $90,000 a year?
For the year. Which Angela reminded me this year, those monies, because of it being ran through the school district, those monies are distributed to the school district and then they enter, remit directly to you. So, it's like an in and an out for them though because they were the tax base that was used. That's why the money is sent that way.
But they don't get to keep it then?
No. You're just like, where's my money? And I said, well, you know what? There's a new treasurer. Let me just reminding of what needs to take place with that.
So, what is the date of the money transfer or whatever? What is the date? When does the money actually go to the school and then what?
At the same time that we disperse the funds to you and all the other entities, it goes to the schools as well. So, that's kind of a trigger and I'll try to remember, to remind the new treasurer that that is your fund. And I also indicated to Angela that would be a good treasure for you to say, hey, just a reminder.
But it took a pretty good chunk away from.
I'm sorry?
I said it took a pretty good chunk away from us, the way, with the consolidation and everything, right?
Well.
How much, how much were we getting, John, before? A year from our, from the levy through the school district before Oakport took us over?
I looked at the receipts real quickly for the past 12 and 13 distribution years. And it is about that $9,000.
Same about?
So, because it was a replacement levy that went to the voters at the time using Bethville School valuation, that'll continue to stay.
Prior. Well, I mean.
We had two half mill levies.
Oh, and generating about the same.
Twenty, so you read 50% of what you had.
What's going on up the living?
The budget, when it's filed with our office, of course, that goes to the Budget Commission. And the Budget Commission will, depending on the information we get from the state concerning your local government fund, they will have the hearing August 3rd to review the information that's presented in your budget. Budget Commission role is to look at the funds that estimated levies are going to, or levies are estimated to generate, as well as the balance that is currently unfiled or the carryover. You know, you certainly don't want to have an entity with a million dollar carryover and then still trying to accumulate taxes from the taxpayers and then nothing being shown as a result.
No improvement, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, there's certainly a taxpayer expectation. So, that's what the Budget Commission does. And that's made up of the auditor, treasurer, and prosecutor. And I have to say, the entities in Sonica County are very straightforward with the information. So, Budget Commission, I think, has only had to write one letter to an entity saying, you know, are you planning on building and building? Help us understand why there's an amount in this fund. And exactly that's what they were doing. Do you guys have any questions?
I was, I wanted to ask. Okay, now, this is like our budget here, right? You guys approved this. We sent, when we make up a budget, we send it to you and you guys approve it. Okay, and what's in there is, you know, when we say this gets this and this gets this and this gets this. We just can't take money out of any of these places and stick it other places, can we? Right?
Well, certain funds are restricted.
Yes, yes.
So, those monies have to be spent within that fund, in those requirements.
Well, I don't think a lot of people understand that.
And that's it.
Yeah.
There's no hidden money.
Yeah.
We can't do this or that.
Right. If it's a special revenue fund, for instance, park, fire is a good example, those have to be spent on.
Those things.
Those things.
However you proposed it to the ballot, or proposed it to the taxpayers on the ballot.
Well, see, I think a lot of people think, you know, when they look at this and they say, well, geez, look at all that. You know, let's just take some of this and put it here. And we can't make people understand you can't do that, you know?
Right. I mean, you guys have a sewer out there, don't you?
Yeah, yeah.
That's a good example.
Government, yeah, right there. Can't touch that.
Generally have a revenue stream with that. But again, it has to be spent for.
Dead service, et cetera.
Yeah. The auditors will be all over you and they're, you don't want to go there.
So, we're just trying to make the public more aware of what's really going on because, I mean, it's, it is very structured and there's, you can't really, you can't, you're not shady, you can't be shady at all in this stuff. See, that's what it is, so.
Yeah, you have general fund, that's, that's a.
A little more flexible.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But of course, everything that you do, you do via your ordinances, men, to document it. If you transfer, have to do an advance or whatever to a particular fund.
Thank you.
Any other questions or anything you'd like me to look into for you?
Well, thank you for coming tonight and enlightening everybody and. That's what we want to get out because we have been accused hiding money for the parks and stuff. We want to make sure that the people is aware that that does not happen, so.
I looked at carryover in the past. For instance, what was certifying carryover this year for that particular fund was about 6,200. But of course, if you're like county government, you've got payroll, you've got other expenses coming out of that right away before you get the real estate receipts, which typically are distributed in April. Early, I'm sorry, late March, early April, because collection is usually towards the end of February.
I have a question, Julie. My name's Stan Poe. I don't know if you remember when we spoke a few weeks ago, but we talked about money that the Oakport Secretary was gonna need to write a check for roughly $11,000. Has that been done or when will that be done? Am I confusing that with?
Yeah, that refers to the comment of them being the in and out agency for the money that we have to distribute. And I am under the impression that was done shortly after Angela had brought it to their attention.
So, like a couple of weeks ago?
Exactly, but we have received them.
Yeah.
I left maybe June 1st, I don't know.
Probably shortly after we spoke. You and I spoke a couple of weeks ago.
At your meeting?
At what? What meeting? I talked with her on the phone.
He said on Facebook, he had a meeting.
When was it till we finally got a hold of him? Because I think he was in training for him to do that. That sounds about right.
Middle of June.
Yeah, because Angela and I had a string of emails back and I was asking, was it, you know, was it resolved?
So, the Village has received that 11,000 back? And that has nothing to do with the 9,400 or 9,500 that you're talking about coming in the near future?
Yes, it does.
That's the same thing.
The same thing.
Yeah. That's an estimate of what one of the particular levies will generate.
Okay.
Yeah, and I believe you got the rollbacks already from these states.
But what people don't understand is that money was figured into the budget for this year already.
Yeah. So, when we did, when we figured out the budget for the beginning of last year, we knew that we had revenue coming in. So, that was part of the budget we used in the park. So, you know, it's just a timing when you got it, so.
This is free monthly.
Budget, just looking at it real quick, I think that that's probably why that 14,000 is reflecting there. And last year it was considerably higher, just to reflect the one levy.
If it had already been figured into the budget, it was my understanding, maybe I misunderstood, that that was just recently found out. So, I don't know that it would have been figured into the budget.
No, no. It's always shown in the budget because those are the levies that are active. It's just a matter of the funds being distributed to them because they were the authority who allowed you to use their tax base to go with the levy. It ties, it ties clear back to the Bethville Park Rec Base, clear back to when all that happened. Yeah, so, you don't want to go there, but that's how that money is distributed now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So, if you feel free to give me a call if there's anything I can look into or clarify, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Okay, any public comment? Now, we'll go on from.
I just have park stuff here, so I can wait until.
Okay. Okay, reports from committees. Finance, budget audit, Scott?
Yeah, we already discussed all those issues already, so.
Okay. Police, Brandon?
Stats are as follows. They're under sheet. Fourth of July obviously went off quite well. I didn't get to do it, I had to work with officers, but the four officers are there, so they had very few problems and everything went good as far as we're concerned, police department. I gave Gary the resignation letter for Brittany, who's been leaving up to the Air Force, obviously, which she does every year. I'm just asking you guys to be aware of it and clear it so I can put that in her file. And I'd like to introduce Officer Jason Clark. This is our newest officer. It's annoying you don't see him, so you're not calling and saying, there's some weird guy driving a cruiser. Do you know what he looks like?
No, you're the weird guy driving.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, we got that figured out.
So, you'll see him around. He's, he's gonna be working quite a bit, so you'll see him. He'll be working mostly afternoons and midnight, so I think we need him on. So, he will be here then. So, if you see him, wave at him, say, "How are you doing?" Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, while, while we're on that, it says, "Dear Mayor Harrison and Village Council, please accept this letter of resignation from the position of police officer effective today. I have enlisted in the United States Air Force and will be leaving for basic military training on Monday, July 13th, 2015. I accepted a position working as a security force specialist that will further my growth and development in my career. I have enjoyed working for the Village as a park director and as a police officer and will miss my colleagues. However, this new position will challenge my growth and further my career. I appreciate being able to work for the Village of Bethville and I wish you all the best. If there is anything I can do during the transition, please let me know. Best regards, Brittany Altway." Brittany, you have been a real good asset to us, so I think we wish you the best of luck in.
We appreciate your service.
In your endeavors and we know that just the way you are, that you'll excel over everything anyhow. So, we're very proud of you.
And I probably need to make a motion to accept her resignation, right? I'll make a motion to accept Brittany's resignation.
I'll second it.
Is that Bill?
Yep. Bill's in the mood.
Is that you, Bill? You say you, Bill.
Scott?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I don't know, I'm like keeper.
Yes.
You're always welcome back, kidding.
Any other questions for Brandon? If not, we'll go to fire. Okay, we had 10 calls for the month. Yearly total is 53 calls. Truck 64 and ground ladder have passed their test. Clean up, Joyce?
I don't have anything today.
Okay, John, Watersewer Street?
Nothing for Watersewer on Street. M&amp;B was told they could go ahead with the Union Street project, but they have yet to get back with the state on it. Other than that, I've been working at Park with Gary and the guys, so that's pretty much all I have.
Okay. Any questions for John? If not, we'll go to Park. Brittany, you got, have to bring up?
I don't really have anything. Everything was turned in. I don't know what the total amount for funding that we brought in for like the gates and stuff and swimming. The beach was pretty packed. We ended up having, it's, I don't know. It's like first round. Two were from last year that we had and then the others were from Paul Storia. So, Paul Storia is to equal, we need to possibly send them a thank you letter from the Village for helping us out with the lifeguards. They all did a great job. I mean, there were a couple rowdy kids and stuff like that, but they were all able to handle the situation and everything seemed to go very well.
Yeah, there's one excellent.
You know, the thing is, I didn't really see much, many of the Bethville kids out here. I saw everybody but Bethville kids in the swimming part of it. I mean.
There weren't very many community members, even from Oakport, there weren't that many.
I was on the swimming hole duty from 12 until 4:00 and there was only one person from Bethville that went through that gate. You know, and, you know, our, not that our feelings are hurt or anything, but we're getting tired of getting slammed and beat up and the people from town won't even come out and, and support it, you know? And then after the fireworks, they were bitching about people left trash and did this and did that. Nobody offered to help us clean it up, you know? We've been out there for a week getting ready and it looked beautiful. And, and I just want people to quit complaining and if they don't know what's going on, you know, give me a call and I'll give you, I'll tell you what's going on, okay?
Or come to consummate.
We won't go into it, yeah.
Come to consummate.
So, but I am, I am very upset.
We all put a good effort into making some good fireworks and everything, so I think a lot of, you know, a lot of effort out here.
Yeah, fireworks was awesome.
It takes a lot of resources and, you know, and, I mean, you always can try to do better, but it's not just a few people trying to do the whole community thing, you know? That's the frustrating parts.
And then I noticed another thing with everybody from town sit down here for free to watch them and never even offer to pay them. Five bucks to get us off the ground, you know? So, I don't want to hear any more complaints or you're gonna hear from me, okay? So, enough said. All right, next.
I was told when I went out to the Dollar Store the other day that during the fireworks, the parking lot was full and they were having tailgate parties and they were just buying everything out of the Dollar Store.
And that's human nature, I mean.
They're going to, you're going to.
April have something too?
Yeah, April?
April, what do you have to?
I just had a couple of questions and they'd like to be answered tonight.
Okay.
Joyce?
Yes.
I was one of those people that sent down there, but I had an excuse. Ryan was bailing and we would have came through the gates, we would have missed half the fireworks. Just to let you know. Um, I just, I know. I felt bad because we were sitting down there. The kids only lasted about 10 minutes in the fireworks, not that they weren't great, but, you know, they all sleep every year. I just was curious, I guess, you know, with the 9,400 year, I know that that is by far not enough to keep the park going, like every year for swimming and stuff, you know, sitting in, you know, and doing Brittany's job, but just being on the park and stuff, but, and I know that you guys do your budgets, obviously, now. If for next year, you know, we all know that the Bethville, everybody complains and nobody goes out to the park and they say they want it cleaned, but nobody helps. I mean, we dealt with that when I helped on the board, you know, and now all of a sudden, everybody wants to help, but still, nobody's doing that now.
Yeah, they don't, yeah.
It's people from everywhere else that we draw in. So, I guess my question is, is if we, like I said, 9,400 is not enough to run the park, but is there any option to even open swimming for next year for like Thursday through Sunday or Friday through Sunday, two days, you know, three days, four days a week? I mean, have you guys looked at that option? Are you still weighing those things for next year? I know, you know, obviously with the budget, you guys must have some kind of idea of what can happen with that. That, and you don't have to answer it now, you know, just something, you know?
No, it was something to think about, but the big problem there would be, that I could see right off the bat, would be that who's gonna win a lifeguard for two days a week or three days a week, you know? It's hard to find them if we had to hold.
If you're open a couple of days a week, usually Fridays, Saturdays were our biggest days. So, I'd have to, if you had not running concession stand, you'd have to have three lifeguards on duty because the state requires to have 20 lifeguard per, or 20, one lifeguard per 20 swimmers in the water. And then if you have more people sitting on the beach, you have to set a lifeguard out there to man the beach and stuff like that to just watch for people. And I think it would be difficult to find someone willing to do that.
The big thing is, is it's $400 a day to open that beach.
Yeah.
$9,400, well, $1,200 off top is for fuel to blow the place, so.
You have to father do that regardless, though.
Right.
Besides Father's Day, last year, Father's Day weekend, I should say, on the Fourth of July, we didn't break. We didn't break the 400 on any day besides those two days.
Well, even, even on the Fourth of July this year, you only brought in $800 off the beach.
But John, John, tell them, all right, we, we sold $800 worth of tickets, okay? We had to pay the lifeguards $12 bucks an hour to get them to come here.
Oh, well.
Okay, now listen. Okay, so, $72 an hour we were paying because there were six of them. We were in the hole at the end of the night.
Well, everything.
You know, we didn't make, we didn't make a dime, so people don't understand that.
Well, when you figure your 14 grand for fireworks off top, you're never gonna get out of the hole.
I mean, I think if we could get extra grants to come in and things like that, possibly you could get guards to do it. But if that $400 a day.
The problem is, is you can't get grants.
That's $800 a weekend.
Grants don't pay wages.
Yeah, they don't pay wages.
Right.
So, and that's where your problems are.
Well, that was just, I was just kinda curious because that answers like my other questions that I had. The only other question was that $1,000 grant that the park had received from Tiffan. What, did that ever get used or was that?
All the stuff's upstairs.
Okay. We just didn't put it out there, people didn't take it and stuff like that. It's volleyball nets we put up on the fourth, but they're gonna come back down that way. It'll get destroyed and stuff like that.
Yeah.
It was like over $1,800.
No, I ordered everything that you had on the list.
Was the basketball court supposed to get repaid though?
It's, yeah.
Kenny, Kenny got with me on that for the basketball court and he, and he said he's gonna work it in as soon as he can.
And it's holes and everything's upstairs. I just don't want to, I mean.
Right. Oh, no, I went on a link, yeah.
So, April, I think, just, just so you understand, I think the. So, April, I think, just just so you understand, I think the council wants to keep the park in motion and usable for the public, but I think it comes down, it's the swimming thing's the, it's the bigger issue, because that's where the real cost is at. I mean, so the dilemma is, we can use this levy for the next several years, probably support mowing the yard and maintaining the place and use it so it's too useful. The issue comes down to, I don't see how how we can justify the swimming and, and, we don't want to pull the money out of the general fund and all that stuff, because, I mean, you keep taking out the general fund, and we should be using the money for other things.
Right.
It needs to be done in the community, so that we get more money for our park, is what I'm saying, so.
Right, so I mean, the public needs to know that, I mean, there's probably never gonna be swimming out at the park again, unless there is something, another levy that gets put through, is what it's gonna.
I think it's, I think it's important that what people don't understand, you need to look at other communities like Paul Storey and Fremont and Philly, because I've had this discussion with some of the, some other other entities, and and the issue comes down to, they're they're struggling to get people to come to the parks and stuff, like Paul Storey's like that, because people, they're they're, they don't do the the baseball and the things like we did when we were kids.
They sit in the house.
The demographics have changed, the people are doing whatever, other things or whatever, soft or whatever the new new thing is, and so you have to ask yourself, you know, you can't live totally in the past what you used to, you have to look at what kinda what everybody's doing now and where you wanna spend your money at. So that's that's the dilemma we're we're struggling with. So I don't want anybody to think that we don't care about the park, that's not the issue, the issue is, where do we wanna spend the money and what are we gonna do with the money? Because we're we're struggling with that as well, because, I mean, just to maintain, you know, the yards and and the buildings and all that, but, I mean, you know, you can go through ten thousand dollars pretty fast anymore.
Right.
I mean, you're doing it with volunteers right now, why have to let volunteers go away?
Right, and I I understand that, and I've seen a number of people, that's why I was just curious, I was curious with that, and then, you know, what's being moved forward with that money that we don't have anymore, I mean, I mean, I know you guys have options, but is everything stagnant or?
Well, I'm still gonna try to get with Old Ford and see if I won't put it on the levy, I think. If that would work, we could be open and be in full scale again, which would be not a problem, but.
But I mean, like, if this is going to be, I mean, it's gonna be two thousand and seventeen before any of that happens.
Right.
So it's like, if it's gonna happen, it has to happen now, else it's gonna be, you know, the other levy goes away in two thousand and seventeen, and then what are you gonna do when that, this, you know, ninety-four hundred that is coming in now goes away in two thousand and seventeen, the park is gonna open by October.
Well, the other thing you gotta ask yourself, April, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, but you gotta look at it from Old Ford's point of view, what do they what do they wanna do? And what and what resources they want, because, I mean, you you go over to Old Ford, you look at what they have in their their little parks they have behind the school or whatever, and then what we have out here, you have to ask what, there's a lot of redundancy there, so where where do they wanna spend their money? So, it's it's not just what we wanna do in this community, now what, now when you're talking about the bigger bigger picture, with the Old Ford district and all that.
Right, but I feel like, have, I mean, have we done, like, have we done a survey, like, during school, like, the school year, when the school year comes up in August? I mean, send out a paper, we're home with the kids.
We can do that.
The fairies don't wanna get involved anymore.
It's not a matter of that, I'm just asking for a survey and then saying, yes, we're.
Well, I looked at the survey they did for the town for the, what was it for, the?
Income.
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 Yeah.
And they didn't, and the survey got thrown away. So.
And we can try that out, I mean, we can try to.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're. Yeah, I mean, we're open for any suggestions.
So we need to, we need to negotiate with the the board and see if they wanna, you know, see where they wanna go, because, you know, they got the pulse of their community as well, we gotta see what they wanna do, because, I mean.
Well, they answered it, they're, yeah.
Yeah, and but end of the day, we gotta have their buy-in, and we're not going anywhere, because the problem is, if we go, we put a ballot ballot on, or, you know, or levy, on the ballot, and if they throw it out, then you're, then you're basically, you're just done.
Because I did go to the school board, and I did ask them if they would put it on, and they said, right now, it would not pass, so we don't wanna do that, so.
Is there anybody in here that knows any one member of the top one percent in the United States that we could contact? Because it just said on TV last night, they've got, they just got.
I know Scott.
If we just knew some, I'm trying to think if anybody in Bethville ever made any money that we could ask him for.
Yeah, I was looking through the budget, because it has the last three years on it, in two thousand thirteen, the budget was seventy-two six, for the park, just for the park.
For the parks.
In two thousand four, and in that year, we had cases for ten-five, ten hundred bills.
Yeah.
Two thousand fourteen was almost seventy-five thousand, just around the park.
Yeah, I mean, that, those are real numbers, I mean, that's.
And I were down to nine.
Yeah, so it's. So, I mean, we're feeling, we're all, we all are struggling with the same thing, April, I'm just gonna be honest with you, but, you know, we're we're looking at, you know, what what are our options? I mean, everybody thinks we have these options, but we don't, and you gotta be careful, like, like I said, trying to get grants and all that stuff, you, that buys assets, but you gotta be careful with those, because then there's always some kind of a catch to them.
You gotta pay.
You saw, I think you saw Saturday where you were telling the sets.
Right.
Because instead of paying five dollars to get the gate, they were all sitting out here in the lot.
Yeah.
That was your town.
But I mean, we don't have to focus on the town, I mean, and it's not a discussion for right now, but I mean, we can.
Yeah, but if they're the ones that's gonna be funded, yeah, you do have to focus on the town, what do they want their tax money spent for?
Right, I was wondering if they want it open.
I mean, inevitably, inevitably, they're paying.
I mean, we're just stewards of the money, we're just trying to do the right thing, but in the day, we gotta.
I think there's no money there to do anything, I know that.
But even if the money was there, we have to deal with supporting the village.
Right.
And if the village as a whole does not want to utilize that park, then we as stewards of the village certainly cannot put the money into it.
Right.
What about.
Not only we have other things we have to do.
How's it was selling it to somebody, I mean, if somebody wants to buy, and you have.
There's a, that, I think that was on the table too, selling that to a private person or whatever, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a problem with that.
So I guess the thing is, to do something, we gotta put that in balance, see what people do.
Yeah, we gotta do, see what people want.
Because. Yes.
Yeah.
But see, the thing is, like, everybody needs to understand, that was that was given to us for a dollar, right?
Yeah.
So, it was it was basically a benefit to, for the basic employees for years and years and years, and they substituted heavily, so.
Yeah, the ba- the basic did everything when they was here, they they did all the labor, they built everything, they, it all came out of the basics, labor force, all the materials, everything they did, the basic did.
So it's a lot easier to manage something if you got those kind of resources.
I mean, I I hate to see it go too, because my dad was on the ground floor, Jimmy Lang was, Dad was on the floor, ground floor, um, Glenn White, uh, I mean, just a number of people around here that they could get anything they wanted. I mean, there wasn't no problem with any money, it isn't like today.
You wanna see a real example, all you have to do is look at Whirlpool Park.
Yes, yes.
That is supported by a mega corporation, the world's largest appliance manufacturer. Uh, I used to be in charge of the maintenance that went out there on afternoons, and we, my my labor and maintenance crew did most of the repairs during the summer for many years. And they just decided it's not profitable, it's not, it's not worth the time and effort, and overnight, that thing was tore up, it was sold to the Abdul brothers.
Yeah, yeah.
And 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 everything was ripped up, so, and there's a company that could could have afforded to do it, but they're not gonna do it. So, that is a private organization that decided that there's no profit in the park, so a private organization, if there's not profit, they're not gonna have it. And if you sit there and talk about, you're out there for four hours, and one Bethville kid goes through a gate, you know, on a major holiday.
I was ticked. Yeah, I was ticked.
Now, now you got, what do we do when it comes to using the resources we have in our town? And the answer is, I mean, to, appears to me, you don't use it at the park at this point. And I'm not sure why Old Ford at any point in time would say, okay, we're gonna pour our money into the Bethville park.
Well, Old Ford's got.
Without something in return.
Right.
They got their own park, and they also got their, uh, Fort Seneca, uh, ball fields, and they don't even want nothing to do with their ball field, so, you know, there you go.
I think that school was key to keeping that thing running, and without that, we have a lack of options.
Well, we we have roughly about three years to.
Figure it out.
Yeah, to maintain it, but I'm talking about the swimming part.
Maintain it, but then then we have to figure out, well, yeah, but I mean, then then we're gonna, we're gonna figure out what we're gonna do with that entity, because it's gonna be a liability if we don't resolve it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because we know right now, I had to go out the other day and get people out of the swimming, you know, they're gonna jump in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna happen.
Line the fence, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Thanks, people.
I have one thing on the park.
Okay.
With all the planning and stuff, just from outside looking, I wanted to thank Charles Hall and his wife for going out there and doing weeding and planting flowers.
Oh, yeah, they did.
He's the one that's running the bunch of the ministry.
Yeah, reflection ministry, yes.
They really bought into the community.
Yeah.
They did the prayer walk and whatnot, I think he should be commended for going out there in his own time, and they were out there for quite a few hours, you know, like, doing, uh, some weeding.
Yeah, they even put flowers in the flower pot.
So I just wanted to make sure that he would recognize for that, him and his wife would recognize for that, for school.
Chuck and Julie.
Julie, yeah.
Chuck and Julie Hall, Charles Hall. But do we have any other discussion on the park while we're on it, or?
I wanna make sure Gary and the rest of the council members that helped out, get a good thank you to, especially Gary, I mean, he was out there with all them crossways guys all week last week.
That's a lot of work.
Well, it is, it is work, but it, I mean, I think the park looked really great.
It did.
And I, and we had a lot of good comments on it and stuff, and it was long hours, especially Saturday, we did duly.
Especially since we didn't know if we was gonna be able to use it or not with all the water. Oh, my God.
But, yeah, it worked out very well.
It did, it worked out really good, yeah.
We was glad to do it, and the guys did an excellent job. And also, you gotta include Lee Window in there that does a lot of the mowing. He took a break in there because he went to Hawaii to visit his, his grandson, it's stationed over there. So he got back, he got back on the afternoon of the third, so that he could shoot fireworks on the fourth.
Oh.
I mean, that fireworks crew.
Did a wonderful job.
They did a great job, and I think that ours was one of the best around, and they'll continue to do that. I mean, it's, it shows the park was used that day, but unfortunately, it was mostly from everybody but here.
Paul Storey and Fremont.
Yeah.
And there was tiffing people here too, yeah.
But we had a lot of compliments.
Yeah.
Okay, maybe campers local?
No.
I don't think so.
No.
I didn't rec- I didn't recognize any of those people.
I mean, there were some people from town that went out to visit the campers, but they did not purchase a spot themselves.
And Brittany, thanks again for all the work you done out there too, always.
Come back and visit us when you get a chance, okay?
Okay. We've been around the community for a couple days.
Now, Jim Lang and his crew. I think this was his fortieth year of shooting them. Uh, and be- before that, his dad did, my dad did. But, I mean, so it's been going on since in the fifties. So, we need to give Jim and his crew a
Big thank you.
A very big thank you too, which I did, I mean, that night and stuff, but still, it's, it'd be nice to have people just walk up to him and say, fantastic job and all that.
Is Lang still with him either, without?
No, without a L I N G. Okay, we'll move on to zoning, Scott.
It's quiet yet.
So quiet?
I like it quiet. No conflict is always a good thing.
Okay, um, I left streets for paving on here, and these are still the the streets that Rob and Bill recommended. Uh, we do need to put a priority on them, and we gotta see, so that we can see how much money we have to spend to do that. Uh, Route twelve's of great, looks great now, everybody's happy with it, our speed bumps are going and.
Oh, I need to ask a question, the parking spots.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah, well, I mean, really, my Lord, there's only three or four uptown now, I mean, are you still gonna be?
I know, I heard about it all afternoon.
I know, but now, listen, are we allowed ourselves to put some in there?
I don't know, the state does, it's a state highway.
I seen a devoutly ignored anyway today, so.
And they went up to get their mail, so.
Well, I understand the mail part, you know, da da, okay, then the pole and everything, but, I mean, they took out one, two, three, four, five, the one right in front of your place, two in front of the grocery store.
You notice where they're at, though.
Well, yeah, crosswalk.
They're at intersections and crosswalks.
Does anybody use that crosswalk? Maybe when they're coming out of your place.
Doesn't matter, that's still an intersection, it turns around.
Is that right?
Yeah.
And, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't matter that they're not marked out, we can still park there, there's not, no parking.
Okay. Okay, so, I mean, you aren't gonna give them a ticket if.
When did anybody ever park in a parking spot before?
Well, yeah, you're right there, but, I mean, it just looks so so different.
It looks bare.
Yeah, it looks just bare uptown, yeah, okay.
That's the new rules.
But I'll tell you right now, they are sailing through town.
Yeah.
Yeah, those trucks are just flying all over the place, they really are, and and it's wonderful not to hear that when they go by my place, come on, you know?
Right.
But it's all nice and smooth, but boy, they are really flying.
I figured they would be now that things are smooth, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, now, now you can get out there and get straightened out.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Finally, it's only been two years that I, that I've been here, and two times I've been here, I haven't been able to do anything, it's been closed, so.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so, okay.
Now step on the pork plate, kid, and see what you can.
Get us some park money.
Brandon, is that, um, handicap spot in front of the post office gonna be enforced if someone parks there, can they be ticketed?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Handicap spots, a handicap.
So nobody, you can only park in the ones in front of the handicap spot.
The lands are made, get ahead of it, yeah.
Yeah, handicap spots are enforceable, even if.
That's by a law, that's a law, yeah.
Was that, it wasn't handicap before though, was it?
No.
No.
Always no.
But the state did that?
Yep.
They did regulation.
We didn't do none at all.
John?
Zimmerman Paint did it today.
Yeah, do we have any, uh, uh, slow children playing signs anywhere?
Why, are you playing in the room?
No, the light, the library, you know, the kids in the back there, they're flying down that alley now too, I don't know what's going on, all of a sudden, they're really using it.
Where do I put it?
I was gonna put in some, uh, speed bumps, but then you get all ticked off when the snow pile comes through.
Where do you want me to put the sign?
Huh, well.
On the side of your bike, your drive?
Well, I don't care, there's a telephone pole there, maybe I could see it, I wouldn't back into it all the time.
I'm gonna call on that.
Yeah. Now, I don't know, but they are, they really are.
Do you want the alley behind your house?
Yeah, yeah.
Is this a good segue for, um, school zones and trucks?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, probably, probably would be, we gotta figure out, I mean, there's also issues.
The the school zones, uh, if you're expanding it, you have to go to, um, Bowling Green, but we, if it's within three hundred feet of the school, of the the.
Building?
In the the building, and it's all the roads that are adjoining that school property, all of that can be a school zone. Uh, and all you have to do is put up signs pursuant to the uniform, Ohio's Uniform Traffic Control. If you wanna go beyond that, then you, for, uh, the three hundred feet, you would have to apply.
Of course, she wasn't saying for a school zone, she did buy children a place sign.
Not the library, for the li- the library, or.
So that.
They are, they're really planned, but they're.
He was going into our last meeting's discussion of school.
Right. The other, the other thing was, was I talked to Martin Zimmerman about the, uh, the, uh, trucks going through town, and the desire for weight limits, et cetera, and he said, well, there has to be an engineering survey in the county, the county has never had an engineering survey before, uh, and, but if, and so, and there are no plans in the work for an engineering survey. Uh, but if you, if there is an engineering survey done, uh, and they look at the traffic, and they look at the width of the roads and the depth and everything else, then theoretically, um, uh, weight limits could be imposed. Uh, the county, however, has no plans of doing a countywide engineering survey, said there's never been one. So, you you may want to try and, the the speed limit for school zones is twenty miles per hour. So, if if you want an application, we can proceed with an application to expand school zones, maybe because there are more school, there there are more crosswalks in town and people.
Well, I mean, we're well within three hundred feet of all of what you're talking about.
But not the library, no.
No.
No, we're talking about school, but are you saying three hundred feet from the property or from the building?
Let's, it reads from the building itself.
See, now, that's way past three hundred feet. Yeah.
That's a football field.
So you're only gonna have an area that's.
But you can also, any, any, any roads adjoining the property too, of course.
Which already are, but Union Street was the street in question to begin with, and we're gonna be outside of those parameters.
Right.
You can ask to have it expanded, but that has to go to Bowling Green, that doesn't mean it would be rejected, it's a small community. It's a small community, I'm sure, it's a matter of requesting form from them.
Well, that's the next street from the school, I mean, it's, that's an alley other than that, so, that's part of the, that's part of the.
Perimeter.
Right, yeah, the, the perimeter around the school.
All they can do is say no.
I, I doubt it.
See, I, I have concern too with costs now, on, on the other part, is the, the engineering costs to do a survey and all that stuff. I remember talking, it's major money here to do that.
Well, I'm, I'm not even interested, well, I'm not personally interested in a survey, I'm just looking to see if, I mean, you don't have to have a survey to, to apply for a school zone.
No, for a school zone, you, you don't need a survey, you just, you make the application, and, and we'd probably wanna discuss all the reasons where you feel. If, if that's your desire, if you say so, I'll request the application, and just make sure we have signs up already within the three hundred feet of the building adjoining the road.
Yeah, I believe those are, those are, on, on the, well, I don't know, are they, are they up on David?
Yeah.
What? But anyway, uh, I don't think, uh, I, I think that's well outside of the three hundred feet from the building. From, from the alley, from the edge of the property, it's not. Yeah, but didn't you just say adjoining streets?
You can do, you can, also, school zone can be adjoining streets to the school property.
Because all of them are joined, yeah.
Joining streets to the school.
No, has to be the school property.
Yeah, the school property.
Oh, to the property, okay.
Or three hundred feet from the building out, wherever you can get it.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure it's attainable.
Do, do you wanna go beyond that and have me request a form for school zone?
I think we should, 'cause now you're gonna pause this far away, yeah. You can go ahead and request it. There's a reason for this, uh, and, and maybe I'm wrong.
It slows down at twenty miles an hour.
Slows them down twenty mile an hour, but I, I heard, and I don't know this, maybe it's something you wanna check out. But when you, when you go through, and maybe Brandon can answer this, when you go through a school zone, and it's a, you go through, through a town, and you have a traffic citation as a CDL driver, that's one thing, but when you do it in a school zone, it has a different impact on their CDL, I said, and it's not something they're gonna do lightly. And that, right there, will say, okay, guys, you, you need to, you know, 'cause once you lose your CDL, it's gone.
I, I take it most kids in the village walk to school though.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, so it's a matter, a matter of safety also, 'cause you got, now twelve is now a superhighway with it being paved, right? They're flying through, there are all sorts of reasons for school safety, for children's safety purposes of expanding school zone.
You're looking at five miles an hour, and now you've gotta make sure you've got officers on duty during the day, and I didn't think that that was when you guys wanted officers on duty.
If there, if there's a problem, and we're seeing a danger out there, then we certainly should look at making an officer available just 'cause one, once that gets out, that you're, the Betsville's watching them in the school zone, they're not gonna do it forever, they're gonna stop.
Well, here's something else, just so you know, we don't have to rely just on Betsville police officers, 'cause the OSP has always said, if there's a high-speed traffic area, let us know, and we will hit them. So, we can call in the Ohio State Patrol with people, i- if, if Betsville doesn't have the manpower out there, especially during school hours, they're interested. That, that was a long time ago, but they're still interested, it, it gets them numbers, so we can get OSP out there if there is a significant problem somewhere. Now, granted, when I talk to them, they wanted aircraft and stuff like that, but, uh, I don't think they'll have aircraft out there, but.
They'll send a balloon around.
Well, I think we can explore it and see what, you know.
So I can get the form, and then that we can proceed with that.
I, I, let's, let's continue this on, I guess. Yeah, well, yeah, just get the form, and then we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, when you think of, think about it, I mean, I.
Well, I'll bring it in, and, and you all have any reasons for putting on forms too.
You know, it may not amount to anything, but if one child gets hurt and we fail to do anything about it, I think we're gonna regret it.
And all the state can do is say no.
Yeah, so, well, then, we've done everything we can.
But, but at the same time, I think we can push them to say yes, if it's about child safety.
That's what, that's what it's about. Because they're just on school board, on school zone, the ODOT and Bowling Green?
Yeah, I have to get a special form from them, that's fine, no big deal, um, I'll write, request it, and then I'll bring it in.
Even though it isn't a state highway?
Yeah, even though it's not a state highway, the Uniform Traffic Control Manual has a specific section for school zones, and it's, and it states under, um, I've got the section under, that's why I brought this in, forty-five eleven, um, of the ORC, you know, we can request this, and, and I, I think it makes sense when you're talking about a small village with lots of roads, and most of the children walking to school, that's why you want people in the village to go slower, everybody.
And see, like, they have great big signs, just, it's not just right at the school, it's like Catholic down, maybe three blocks from the school, and they have big, big signs, caution, children. And they, it's a different sign and everything.
Yeah. And, and you can have signs approaching schools though, too, with things like that as well. Just so long as it, you know, that you spend some money on signs, that's fine.
I think that's money well invested doing that, just to get them slowed down a little bit, you know, and to me, I mean, that, that makes more sense than trying to shut all the roads down. If we just get control of it, so we don't have everybody, 'cause I don't, I don't, 'cause when you look, trying to do a survey and all those other costs, you can bother to get a real expense real quick, and I'm not sure, ready to bank the buck for doing that.
Yeah.
You know, for the community, and I know, I think it creates other issues that we don't wanna create.
It's one of the things we need to do for the people of this town.
And, and I think, though, the, the way it's, I, I think it's, the, the idea of the surveys was for the county to do one, but, you know, we're talking five hundred square miles, it's probably not gonna be on their agenda, right?
Probably not.
Not, not so, you know, we could do our own, but, those are expensive.
Okay, well, let's keep going on. We're, you're gonna take care of that, and then we'll have it back.
Yeah, I'll bring, I'll, I'll just request the form from them, and I'll bring it in, and we can discuss what we should put in it.
Add Union Street on the next thing, but, you know, we'll throw it, huh? Well, no, you're, we're, I was passing that around, so you guys can look at it, and then I do want you to come up this month with what.
Well, you got two number twos, that's why I'm wondering which.
Those are numbers that Bill and I put in. Yeah, they put in there.
Well, they both look pretty.
I mean, if you agree with them, fine, if you don't agree with them, speak up and, and speak your mind.
Well, but I didn't know which one you wanted, this is number one, but you had, uh, Washington and Whole Acre.
We, we were going, we were going by, by severity of the road, there's a lot more that goes into which one we're gonna pay, the, the amount of use it gets, uh, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
I mean, you can have King Street be the worst one in town, but possibly Washington Street's a lot more used, because that's where the school's at. I mean, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that.
But King Street gets all the big trucks, like carpet trucks and all that kind of stuff.
Carpet trucks, bear trucks.
Bear trucks and all that kind of stuff.
No, bear trucks are out front.
They're out front. I think you gotta look at two, maybe, maybe we can look at, like, the one in front of the school, and select, we might be gonna get a grant for that, because that's in front of the school, we might be have a better chance to get a grant for something like that.
Right, and didn't we talk about, do we have to do a lot of handicap accessible stuff for that? That was gonna drive the cost of that street up. Yeah, it was, it was. So, you know, that may be something that we gotta put off the side and say, that's gotta be.
We tried to get a grant for that two years ago.
Yeah.
We couldn't score high enough to get, that was to do the streets and sidewalks there, because we weren't taking out a loan to pay.
Yeah, they wanted a lot of money.
But didn't they put a counter out in front of the school? Did, did they have a counter out in front of the school?
Yeah.
So, I remember a different position where.
But that didn't have anything to do with it, no, we were, we were eligible for this issue one money, but we didn't score high enough in their scoring process because of the amount, well, we were gonna pay for it. We were gonna put up X amount of dollars towards the bigger picture of it, like twenty or thirty percent off.
Yeah.
But they don't want you to have that money to put up there, they want you to put that money up, and they want you to take it out as a loan. You score higher in their process that way.
Well, maybe we need to re-think, rethink that position then, I mean, maybe it makes more sense to do an economic development loan or something like that, and do it that way, if that makes sense to do something like that, I mean, I don't know.
I don't know about the handicap thing, though, I don't remember that.
But the problem is you have to go to the new standards, once you do the, that's what's going on uptown, I mean, that's what happened, that's the new standard, so it's gonna be, that's gonna be the new standard.
On a state highway.
I swear that.
That's the same way to school.
The cost of that was so high because. It was high because that was making the handicap accessible. Yeah, it had a array of ramps everywhere.
Yeah. And all curbs and stuff, all that stuff, it'd be a place, it's a lot of money.
It looked like most of it's done already, but, you know, now they put those, that special block in there. Yeah, 'cause that's the Braille thing, the. In case you're laid down there drunk, you can read your way across. No, no, that tells the, the, that tells the, the blind man that that's a.
Crosswalk.
Crosswalk, yeah.
Well, it's just the right thing to do. So, we'll, we'll just go ahead and we'll pick our, pick our next streets, and we'll just try to see what we got for money, and we'll try to, see what we can do here.
Well, I, I've heard King, and I've heard Seneca.
Yeah.
And then, and that, and Whole Acre, and, um, what was the other one, number two? King was the worst, that is bad.
King's been down there on Stone Alley.
Here to do one.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, what we do is we get the different estimates for each road, and we approach it that way, and like, like you said, we'll get one done, and then we'll, we'll have the next one lined, that we can do or whatever, and that's how we approach it, so, but we need to, at least get some numbers there, so we can kinda evaluate our budget where we're at, so we can make a, make a determination where we're gonna go with the month, you know, with the next one or whatever.
I know, there's some issues on Franklin over there.
Well, from Whole Acre and, uh.
Franklin's much more an alley, but people live on it, I mean, it's, it's a frontage on it. Well, Franklin's the only bad spot, rather than that, it's where that, uh, tap went across.
Yeah, so we, maybe we can look at some repairs of some of those roads that, that solve some of those problems, but we need, like, Seneca, we know that if you don't do something pretty soon, it's gonna be totally gone, you know, that's, it's, it's really bad.
Seneca gets traveled a lot.
Yeah, and it gets, it's rolling off pretty good, so this gets traveled more than it realizes, and I think that, I don't, King, I'm, I'm sure it does too as well, so.
King gets a lot of traffic.
Yeah, so.
It does.
So we need to try to dress those up again, so we probably gotta go with King and then Seneca or vice versa.
And I think what people don't realize too is, King Street goes all the way through, that's not really an alley, that's part of this King Street, between the buildings around it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That is still King Street too.
I see they use that quite a bit more than they used to, so.
Yeah, I mean, it is used quite a bit, but, but I would.
I use it every time I go to the post office.
But I, but I'd like to see, like, Seneca and them, something that's really traveled a whole bunch with, I mean, Seneca's got trucks going on too, just as like what Union does, but I mean, it's tore up, we passed it and passed it and passed it. But that's up to you guys to decide on, so, we can look this over and do that, and.
Well, I think, I, from, from my position, I think that we've already kinda discussed before, we've looked at it several times, and I think that we, we kinda said that.
Everybody keeps saying King.
King was gonna be the first.
Put one and two on it.
King and, and Seneca were the, the two, the next priorities, once we got Union done, and I think that's why we, we stick with that right now, we'll get some quotes, John, and, and move forward, and then, and rig up two separate quotes, and then we'll, we'll see what the numbers are, and we'll figure out what we can afford, so we know kinda what we got to spend, so.
You wanna do King all the way through to Thomas, or you wanna stop at David?
I, how, how was it from?
It wasn't that bad.
It's not that bad to Thomas.
No.
It was just from David, David up to State. It wasn't that bad going from State to the, to, behind the bar, but right there, it's.
No, I, I get that, I'm talking between David and Tom.
No, no, that ain't bad. Or John said it's crowned.
It's crowned up pretty bad.
Yeah, it's crowned, but.
But it's not broke apart though, like the other.
And that part's not as much travel.
It's not used as much, yeah.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, the problem is, probably gonna have to scrape that off and get that leveled back up to be able to do it right.
All that needs to be ground off to be done right.
Yeah, so. Well, why don't, why don't we do that as a separate section, and see what it's gonna cost, and we see if we can put them together and combine it or something, and if it comes in those numbers.
Okay, so is that what council wants, is, is get, get a bid on King and?
King to David, and then King to Thomas.
Yeah, and then, also Seneca as well.
And Seneca, Seneca Street. Seneca, Seneca's, you know, the backstreet.
No, I'm talking about King Street to David, and then King Street to Thomas.
Yeah, I know, I gotcha.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna get up in three.
We got that, three quotes.
Yeah, duh.
Three, three quotes.
Okay. Okay, John already answered about Union Street, 'cause I just wanted to bring it up again, that we're on the agenda to get it done, but, 'cause you guys approved it, but
Yeah.
we was hoping they would do it when, well, they had everything here, but evidently, it don't look like that's gonna happen.
When they had everything all ripped up, yeah. Well, uh, they're paving sixty-one down to where then?
City Limits, probably.
City Limits, so we're gonna have that little patch between the city limits and Sullivan, right? That isn't gonna be done?
That would just though if you.
Yeah.
Oh, is it?
That's pretty good shape there, yeah.
Just needs that one corner thing, yeah, okay.
Yeah, from the four-way stop, but down to, down to traffic light.
Uh, John, I guess the question I have right at the intersection there on Union Street, what we're gonna do that, is there anything we wanna do to that intersection and try to beef it up? While we're doing this, is there anything we should do there, well, we got an opportunity, or, or, I'm just asking.
The only, the only thing you could do would be put concrete underneath it, are you talking about the four-way stop?
Yeah, I just, I'm just in that one area or something.
They scared the concrete, it's just their mains are kind of a menagerie.
Okay, yeah, that's why I'm asking what, what's there, 'cause I mean, I know we got all kinds of stuff running under there, so. So just something to think about, I mean, we can ask that question, or, or maybe we, we can do something a little bit heavier, asphalt in that area, we can, or something that can go a little bit deeper, and, and beef it up a little bit, just break through it, or push it, stop it or whatever.
Right, right.
So, just ask that question with them while we're doing it.
Do you happen to know how wide they're gonna go between Washington and State Street on Union, just the width of the road, or are they gonna go to the sidewalks on both sides? I was just curious, you know, there by the marathon?
They'd be doing the streets, that's it.
So they still have that problem with the stones along the side and the sidewalks being?
Well, I have to put berm in there, I, I have to berm it up.
Well, 'cause the other issue you got, you're gonna, if you try doing anything wider standing, you got the tree issue, you're gonna, what would you do with trees? You're gonna have a lot of money taking trees out, because the trees are basically against the, the street right now, most of them aren't there.
No, I'm talking. Not, not there in front of the.
By the marathon and.
That one, yeah, I know where you're talking about, but, but, yeah.
The whole reason you have a right of way is so that your mains are just on the edge of the asphalt. If you asphalt all that in, then the first time you have a water main break, you're gonna dig that whole thing back up again.
That's why you're gonna have to berm it, if you keep berm in there, I don't think you have a problem, right now, the berm isn't in there, and the trucks are breaking down. They're all the way up on the sidewalk anyway. Yeah. Okay, and then back to the income surveys, I would, John, if you would get those around, though, what we have to do again for those same ones, and let's pick the first week in August of going out door to door and, uh, get them, see, see if we coax them into getting it done, so we get, get it in, we ain't gonna get anything done this year be, with them, because, but at least we'll have them, and we're good for five years then, so we can jump on it right next year and get start, started. Well, we'll just have to go door to door, have all the councilmen do that, and get it done, council persons. Okay, let's go to the second reading of ordinance twenty fifteen dash oh five, which is an ordinance for evading roosters within the village limits of Betsville. Yeah, this is the rooster.
I, I guess I wanted to talk about it a little more as I, as I thought about it, remember I talked to you a little bit the other day, just, I was just, I was just trying to question it, 'cause I thought originally when we talked about this thing was for, uh, farming animals or what, it was.
Agriculture.
Agricultural, so I don't know how we just got to chickens, so that's why I was, I was trying to figure out, we're gonna be that defined.
No, they said they could have chickens, but they can't have roosters.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm just saying, we're, now we're just defined to, just to chickens, so it doesn't, doesn't do anything with the rabbits, 'cause I thought originally we started about it with the rabbits.
On rabbits and dogs.
So I was trying to figure out how we got to the chicken.
I don't know how we got to chickens, I have no idea.
So I, all I'm saying is, I just think, I just think we ought to rethink this thing before we make an ordinance and pass it before, figure out what we really wanna try to do here, because I thought we started off with rabbits and, and, and.
I know, I'm confused about the chicken.
Yeah, so that's why I, I thought, we didn't talk about the chicken and the rooster.
Somebody brought up this, somebody, they had them in another town.
We talked, we was talking about.
Somebody did dark stuff. Yeah, we talked about it, and then he brought up the rooster.
Yeah, so I think the rooster thing was kinda in, in their mind, but I don't.
So you wanna not read it tonight?
Green Springs was doing roosters at the same time as somebody, and.
I think we interposed what we were thinking right into. Okay.
You have those in town though, I'm hearing.
What, chickens?
Roosters.
Roosters.
Yeah, so I guess.
Where's this at?
Over there on Sullivan somewhere.
Just put them on standard time instead of daylight saving time, probably a lot better.
Two words, spell it.
And I thought that was a thing that you're not gonna have roosters in town anymore.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we're talking about right now, so we're trying to figure out.
It was asked, you didn't say something about it because of, uh, rooster cockfights and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, so I guess the issue is, we wanna, we, I mean, we'd be better off having an ordinance, so we'd have a little more flexibility, so if we have the farming animals, we can control it better, then you can, then include all domesticated type animals, I guess, or how do you wanna do that? I mean, to me, we're just getting too focused, and I think, I'm not sure if that's where we, where we wanna go.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, I think what we're, next month, we'll have to pass some ordinance for, for, for bunnies, and that's what, that'll have to be for whatever.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. I think what we're, next month we'll have to pass some ordinance for, for, for bunnies and that's what, that'll have to be for whatever.
Well, I was gonna bring in, what's his face, his goats, to get rid of some of the.
Okay, oh.
So, so that's the issue is, where, where do we really wanna go with this thing? And I guess, I guess we kinda started on that path, but I think sometimes we gotta stop back, sit back and think just about why we're doing something and if it makes sense in the bigger scheme of things, so. 'Cause I mean, it's always one problem.
So do you wanna scrap this one? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's what I'm.
'Cause we did the first reading, now we're go, so we'll just disregard thi- this one now?
What, what is there else we wanna do? I mean, that's just my, my thought right now, I just.
This is what you're saying, you wanna get rid of this oh-five ordinance, right? Is that it?
Oh-five is focused only on roosters?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I guess that's, I was just trying to figure out how we went from bunnies to the roosters, I'm just trying to get this, my head wrapped around, that's all I, that's all I was saying, so.
Okay.
I think we need to rethink this, if we're, if we're really concerned about people having farms in the town, farming, you know.
Well, we have one for bees also.
Yeah, so that's the issue, but so, I mean.
Yeah.
We got a bunch of, let me ask you real quick, if, if you get rid of this one, can you pass an ordinance about this stuff in emergency, or do you have to do the three months of readings?
I'd say three readings.
Well, it's not an emergency because it's not a fiscal matter.
Right, okay.
You can waive a three reading rule, but you would need five votes to do that.
I understand, okay, so.
Well, that's not a problem.
What I'm getting at is you're already two months into this project, we know there's roosters in town.
You can vote it down too, you can just say, hey, no, we like roosters.
I understand that, but what I'm getting at is you're already gonna, you're, you're two months into this project.
Right.
You're gonna be another three months into the other project and now we're gonna be into.
Winter.
Winter time.
Yeah, so I just, I'm just trying to understand.
I think we need to get a broader, you know.
And then if you pass that in emergency, or?
No, you can waive a three reading rule.
Well, whatever.
No, see, an emergency takes effect immediately, where if it's not, it takes effect thirty days after.
No, I. That's what I was trying to get at, right. So if they were to pass it in August meeting, it technically wouldn't take effect until September.
September.
Well, I guess Gary, I was, I don't know, you, you, what, what do you think, um, from your constituents, have, have you?
Well, I was just surprised about the roo- rooster show.
Well, that's why, that's why I was getting at, so I, I, my, my point being, have we had complaints about the roosters and all this sort of stuff? So I, I know we had more complaints about the dogs. See where I'm coming from, so, yeah, so that was a dilemma, so.
I agree, but you can't combine a domesticated animal with a farm animal.
Yeah, but see, the problem is, a rabbit can be both, right? I mean, honestly, you know, I mean, that's, that's the issue we get into, it's the same with chickens. I mean, that's.
And groundhogs.
It's, it's whatever position, well, yeah, it's whatever position you happen to be, if, if you, if you like those kinda animals.
Right.
Then you can domesticate them, or if you wanna become a, a farmer, I mean, you can farm them too, so I mean, some people do that, so I guess.
So you're gonna list every individual animal in an ordinance, or, or how?
Or maybe none? None, I don't think, I don't think you say.
Except for bees.
That's already done, that's where.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is if we could, we could just say domesticated versus farming, if we, if somebody's doing it for profit or something, then that's a farming enterprise versus somebody's doing it for pets. Maybe they handle it that way, it makes more sense, it gives you more flexibility, if somebody abuses it, then you can control it, but you know.
But then how do you cover the dogs in the same ordinance?
Well, that's what, that's what, I don't know, that's what we gotta, I mean.
That's what Rick's here for.
Yeah, so we gotta.
I, I think if you, if you wanted to mix dogs, then you'd have a separate ordinance for dogs.
Yeah.
'Cause it, it depends what you're looking at, are you looking at saying that a pit bull dog is vicious dog?
A guy that's got seventy-two.
I, oh, I just had this same discussion in Green Springs last night in Deja Vu. They got rid of the pit bulls being vicious dogs within the Ohio Revised Code, although it's my position that a, a municipality is under the whole rule of Ohio says that you guys can say pit bull shouldn't be driving, uh, to the village, although that, that's all up to you. Of course, Green Springs says it's okay, it, it's up to every municipality to decide those issues, what's best for it.
And definitely not have the people in town. I think all we're really concerned about is how many dogs. You know, we don't care what kinda dog you have.
And then, and then you're probably looking at kennel licenses and things like that and.
Maybe that would be a better way to handle it.
Well, and the kennel licenses, you go to the dog ward and.
I asked her about that, she said he didn't need a kennel license, 'cause he had licenses for all of them. Well, I would think you have to pay.
You got like seventeen dogs.
Yeah.
Is he breeding them?
Well, I'm sure they are, they're right, they're any.
Well, evidently they are.
They're any.
They, they all may be playing backgammon for all we know.
They're in his house. I can imagine the health board should probably go down and look at.
You can have an ordinance limiting the number of dogs.
Yeah, that's what we want, is limiting.
No, Ballville, they limit, one pet?
You need to find what a dog is.
I mean, I, to me, that, that, that.
That's what they do.
Goldfish.
That would be a better approach, this whole thing, if we looked at, because I just think that you have that flexibility so we can kinda control it, if it gets out of hand. I, I think that you start, we're getting too specific here and I think then, then we're gonna have.
Forty-three ordinances because there's quite a few different.
We have so many ordinances on things you can't do.
Well, I agree, you gotta be somewhat big in order to cover a lot of areas with them, but if we can just write one up for dogs, we've been talking about that for six months, why didn't we do that six months ago?
'Cause I think we're finally getting to that point where we're actually thinking about it, so I'm.
No, don't rush us.
The wheels of justice runs, yeah, right.
Is there a such thing as?
Well, I mean, the issue we're trying to, we're trying to do through zoning and all that stuff, I think that's hope, but I, I think it's better if we, we as a council or as a community come up and figure out how we wanna actually structure that and protect it, so we can, we can get it set that way, I think that's a better way to do it, but. I think that's a bigger issue than the chicken, than the rooster, I don't know.
I don't know how to phrase this, uh, but is there a such of a way to write up an ordinance that would prohibit, uh, anybody from raising livestock, uh, in town, uh, for profit, unless they're considered pets, and if so is pets, we limit the number of those pets to X amount.
Yeah.
I mean, usually the farm animals and stuff like that is gonna be four H.
And I, I don't know, I'd have to check the Ohio Basic Code to see if that's already in there or not, but, um, but yes, sure, you can do that. To me, that makes probably more sense.
I mean, that way, you know, if you wanna call it a pet, fine, but you can have five.
That's how I.
And that's all you're gonna have.
That's how I got away with my chickens and roosters.
That way, if they're trying to raise twenty and sell them for profit, all of a sudden we're taking that right away.
Well, then that turns into commercial business.
Yeah.
For zoning, go, uh, back on.
Well, they can't sit there and say, well, they can't sit there and have twenty of them and say, well, I'm not really running a kennel, they're my pets. Well, you're okay, pick out fifteen and get rid of them, because you can only have five.
I would think three is plenty for dogs.
Well, what about the ones that have about seventy-two cats?
Yeah, but people. Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you gotta be fair on everywhere.
That becomes a challenge for everybody, so.
Yeah, I, I'd say eleven, eleven to five or so.
What do you want Rick to do? What do you want him to bring up for, or, do you want the ordinance on the dogs? Or do you wanna, I don't know how you're gonna broaden the dog, you gotta have one for the dogs and then one for the other animal.
I guess, is, is, is a dog considered livestock, we approach it that way, that gives you more flexibility? No, it's different.
No, it is.
So you gotta have.
Well, the, you.
I mean, it's not like China, we're, right, I mean, whatever.
Well, you, you can, if, if you're killing it to eat, then you can abuse the hell out of them if you want to, so, that is an option, but, under Ohio law.
They have a North African.
But it, it's up to you all, just tell me, if, if you want me to do something, if you wanna think about it, I don't care.
Can't you reference a section in the R C that labels livestock in the ordinance?
Oh, yeah, yeah, life, livestock. I, I mean, we're talking, just tell me what we're gonna talk about, if anything, livestock or dogs, or, or chimpanzees, and, or do you wanna think about it more? I, and, and I'm not being sarcastic, I have one village, you wanna get rid of monkeys, because they had, somebody had a monkey in the village.
No, no, I totally understand you. I think we do, we're saying, broaden it to no, no agriculture for product livestock. And if you wanna have these animals, they gotta be considered a pet, and this is the number you can have.
Right, I think we approach that one way, but then if the dogs.
But, but livestock are not, uh, dogs are not livestock, just so you, we know what we're talking about.
No, that's okay, I'm not talking about limiting those dogs, I know dogs is separate ordinance.
Okay.
I understand that, I'm talking about bunnies and stuff like, now, I don't wanna wake up someone and then Langy have a horse in his backyard.
So this is my pet. There's, there's ordinance that gets a horse raised, though, I think, I think, I think there was.
Is there? 'Cause I know we used to have horses in town.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I had one in my yard, I dug it up.
Not Langy, but anybody.
Really?
There's a rule somewhere that says you have to have so many acres to have a horse. I don't know where, I couldn't put my finger on it right now, but.
Okay, well, goats. That's even worse.
Well, we got goats, you can raise goats for, for four H projects, I mean, several, John's got goats.
I don't have a problem with somebody raising one for four H probably, 'cause you're talking about one or two, you're not talking about one of them.
So we got two issues we gotta deal with.
So no livestock as pets, uh, eh, eh, no livestock except as pets and four H products and banning livestock for profit? Is that what you're telling me?
Right, that makes it commercial, that's a business and then you're, now, it's, they can't do it because it's, they're not, they're residential, their zone is residential.
There's no farmer in town who has some.
No.
Farm at all, no farm in town?
No.
No.
Yes.
There is a farm in town.
A farm that has animals or a farm.
In town, is there a farm in town? That's my question.
I see, is it?
Pope's got farmland right behind.
Who?
Pope, yeah, it's farmland, but it's not, it's not raising domesticated or.
Well, he's not raising any.
Are we talking about?
Well, I just asked farm, I just asked farm, first, first of all.
Yeah, Pope, you know, got the lot right here.
Yeah, but he doesn't raise anything, huh?
No, yeah, corn or beans or something, but.
And the dogs, I think, maybe we could put a limit of three or four, that's it, yeah, and that's, that's, I don't know, there's probably some people that got more, two of them, right, realistically? But I think we just, the only problem is we got the one that's got the seventeen or twenty of them, that's a bigger issue, because that's really, I mean, probably not, I know he's trying to sell them, but he's not, and I think just.
I don't think he's doing a very good job then, 'cause he's still got a lot.
No, and I think if he comes down, I think it just got a, got a hand on him and now he doesn't know what to do, he's got all these animals, you know, and he doesn't know what to do with them, so. The problem is they come attached to them, so then they can't dispose of them, so then they got, now you got a bigger problem, so.
Okay, well, this, see, what, what do you want Rick to do? You want him to drive up something for next council meeting?
I think we got, we got the two things, the livestock and the dogs.
Yeah.
Okay.
We gotta approach it that way, we gotta see where our, our options are.
So we wanna scrap oh-five, right? So we're gonna have to have a motion to.
Discontinue?
Discontinue, can we use that number then for, for seven years?
No.
Or we're just discontinue it, right? Okay, so I need a motion in the.
I make a motion to scrap the rooster.
Okay.
I second the rooster.
Go ahead.
No jokes about jumping chickens.
Okay, go ahead.
Ken?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joyce? Yeah. Stan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes. How many dogs, folks?
Say, four tops.
Four, I think we have four.
Four, let's do four, yeah, do you agree, Bill?
Yep.
Okay, Stan?
Stan, okay then.
Yep.
I mean, it gives them a little bit of flexibility, but I think it's. I know, I know people that like dogs, I mean, I don't have a problem, I just, we do it out in the back, it's, or.
Okay.
Three readings, I take it, so people have enough time to adjust their lives and.
Get out there.
Same thing with the livestock.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, for.
Getting it on the agenda, but.
Which one? The men, kind?
Yeah.
Wait, it is, I got it, number four, but that'll be on the new business, we're still in the old business.
Yeah, okay.
Um. Okay, I guess that should be on the other page, maybe, too. Uh, do we have anything to bring up under old business? Anybody else bring anything else up? If not, we'll go on to new business. What do you have? What do you have, Max?
I have it.
I was probably gonna hang on.
There was one person who didn't show up at night court, so I know that.
Okay, so we don't have one, okay. Um. I guess we'll jump to the ohiocheckbook dot com. Uh, the letter that I got from Josh Mandel.
Here's one, says Mandel.
That's what I'm looking for, okay. Okay, I read it to you last time, he wants us to do this ohiocheckbook dot com to make transparency for the, our books, so that people can get in, see what we spend our money on and so forth and that. I talked to Andrew at, uh, at his office, and Angela, he said it would be very cool, uh, easy work for you, since you're on U A N. He said, once you get it set up, it would probably take you maybe five to ten minutes to keep it updated. Um, I have a number for you to call to talk to this Kelly gal, and she can explain it all to you, but I mean, it sounds, sounds really good, it's, the thing he said is working. It's gonna be out and about real soon, and he said it'd be nice to have you in the first, first, uh, batch, 'cause Tiffin's looking at it, uh, Green Springs looking at it, they're gonna be on it and, and, uh, I think Fostoria and some of them, but, uh, as far as us for a village, why, what he recommends is, is do like right now for like thirteen, fourteen, put that, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, like three years. And then you'll keep updating it, uh, with it, but he said it's very, very easy, and it's.
So how much effort will it take?
It won't take her, he said, to get it, to even get it going right off the bat, said if she spends twenty minutes, that'll be to get what they need. What all she has to do is call her and talk to her and they'll send her all the necessary paperwork and that, but I, I feel that it'd be a good way that people can just get in there and look and see what we're doing with it.
So every, every check that she writes, you mean that somebody can see, see it online or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, that's transparent, yeah, the Ohio, you go to ohiocheckbook dot com. And we'll have our own, we'll have our own web, they'll design our own website and everything.
What about, do you have like numbers and stuff on your check that somebody could steal, steal the numbers off your check or stuff?
It should be read only.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be read only, you can't get in it and do nothing. I mean, she's the one that puts it on and, and that, so.
You'd have to have administrator rights to get in there and do anything to.
They can hack anything.
But they, they designed the website, they do all.
They can hack it now.
I know, I know, but it's just.
They don't have that, have that website to hack it.
It's worried, yeah, when you do that kinda stuff on there.
But I think it's, I think we need to get more, in more modern, I think, I have a product that, I just gotta get there, so.
Oh, I think, I think it's a good deal, so, I mean, I'll just need you to bring it up so we can make a motion on it, so we can pass it and put it in a minute.
I'll make a motion to. Well, I'll make a motion to, um.
Join.
Join, or, or how, or ohiocheckbook dot com and.
I'll second it.
Put that, put it together, yes, we can get on there, I think that's a good thing.
Okay.
Ken?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Joyce? Yeah.
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Okay, I think that would be a good move, we're. Okay, I think that would be a good move, we're not for.
I think it'd be an excellent move. Imagine the people that criticize us about what we spend here and there, right there, look at it.
Yeah, you see where it is.
We're not hiding a thing.
Okay, next we got an ordinance, uh, twenty fifteen dash oh seven, an ordinance amending the rules of council with the attached additional rules of council of the village of Vetsville, Ohio.
That's a first reading, so you only need to read the title.
Yes. Okay. Which I did. Everybody had a copy of it, so I just give it a little over. So that'd be the first reading of it, I mean, as long as everybody's agreed with it.
Yeah.
Seven, seven, that sounds good.
Okay, that'd be the first reading. Okay, some more good news, we got another letter from Swigger Gas.
Oh.
The gas, cost of gas at Swigger Gas Company has decreased in amount of four cents per CCF, or forty, point forty cents per MCF. The purchase gas cost recovery rate will therefore be decreased from forty-six cents per CCF to forty-two cents per CCF. This decrease will be effective in the bills due on June sixteenth, twenty fifteen.
All right.
So that's a nice five, give a little thing, and then there'll probably be some more drops, too.
On, on, how many, how much natural, how much natural gas do we actually use, though, here?
About everybody in town hooked up.
No, no, I'm, I'm talking about here, for the, for the village, I mean, the village.
Oh, here, really?
Do we use more? I mean, of course, probably got the plant, lots of plant and stuff out there, I guess I don't.
No, that's all electric.
Oh, man, that's.
Oh.
Yeah, our electric bill's about twelve hundred dollars a month.
Whoa, whoa.
We gotta think about maybe putting, getting gas out there, maybe, since.
I don't know why they did, yeah, everything out there.
I mean, that probably paid for itself pretty quick, if that resolved.
There's, there's a money, money saver right there.
Yeah, seriously, that's.
Gotta look into that, John.
I mean, are you using radiant heat out there, is what you're using, or what are you, what are you using? I mean, electric, but is it radiant?
Pump outlet.
Heat pump.
That's not real bad, but.
No, they don't, they didn't insulate that building at all.
Really?
That's another reason.
It's just a straight-up block building.
We probably oughta think about resolving this stuff, cause then for the long term, we need to get that, cause this, that's, it's gonna come back and bite us in the butt if we don't.
I mean, we're throwing away every year.
Cause, cause we know it's gonna go up eventually.
I don't know why they never did. Cause they, they, they ran, well, see, a lot of that was all signed off on by council, so, I don't know. They let them run the, they let them run the electric underground too. You know that's been in water ever since it was put in.
I see these guns, and they bury their, like, they kind of, under, they don't have one, it's really nice up there.
Yeah, but when you're running a, a big plant like that, if there's ever any problem, I don't know how you'd ever afford to fix it.
They have like, they have a, I don't know, a big, for so many people.
A manhole, yeah.
Yeah.
Every so often, but I'm talking about the cost of replacing.
Yeah, it's, it's expensive when you go underground, it's, it's ten times the water it is going over there, probably, but in high voltage, pretty much repeating.
Why don't you ask a truck or whatever, how much it would cost to ta- put gas out there?
I don't know what's his gases add, I don't.
I mean, we're, yeah, well, God, it's right out there at Stoker'sville.
They should, they should have ran it what they liked.
Yeah, really.
I don't know why they didn't. Yeah, they, it runs, it meets the curve.